Good evening and welcome to the regular town council meeting of Monday, April 11th, 2022, here at 7:05 PM in the McKinnon Council chambers. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, clear, and just for all.
Okay, roll call, Mary.
Counselor Adams?
Present.
Counselor Catrona?
Absent.
Counselor Daniel?
Present.
Counselor Dow?
Present.
Counselor Jovan?
Excused.
Counselor Lazo?
Present.
Counselor Marquetti?
Present.
Counselor Ryan?
Excused.
And Counselor Steves?
Present.
Item number three, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, March 28th, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Very good. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections? Counselor Lazo?
All those in favor?
Okay. All those in favor. Anyone opposed?
Abstained.
We have one abstention. Very good. Subcommittee reports. General Government would be Counselor Ryan. She has, I believe, three items on the agenda for this evening, and they were all unanimously approved to come up to council. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a meeting coming up on the 19th and the 27th for budget discussions. Thank you.
That's it. Very good. Education and Human Services would be Counsel Jovan. He's absent this evening. I believe he's got a meeting coming up next week regarding the budget. Item D, Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. We have had no meetings since our last town council meeting. We do have one scheduled for this Thursday, April 14th, at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Very good. For E, Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lazo?
Yes, no report at this time. We did have a meeting. We have numerous items tonight on the agenda, and our next meeting is going to be a budget meeting on Wednesday, April 13th, 2022, in the Veterans Room at 6 o'clock. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you. I have one announcement this evening. The Town Clerk is reminding everyone that there is a town election on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022. Currently, there are five candidates for three town council seats, and there are four candidates for four school committee seats. Other offices open this year are one Board of Assessors seat, one Redevelopment Authority seat, one Housing Authority seat, and one Southern West County Regional School Committee seat. The last day to submit nomination papers is Tuesday, April 26th, 2022. As a reminder, 39 signatures are required for townwide office. If you wish to register to vote, which is most important, the Town Clerk office hours are Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Thursday from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and Friday from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon. The last day to register to vote in the June 14th election is Wednesday, May 25th, 2022, and there will be special office hours in the Town Clerk's office that day of 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Thank you, and that's all I have. Item number six, Town Manager's announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. We have some traffic constables and new hires for the Police Department this evening. I've talked with the chief about that, and he'll be presenting his recommendations later on. I just wanted to touch base on two things. As I noted, we had talked one of our last meetings about our national gas contract, and I had sent some information out last week. I'd been working and talking almost daily with our consultant, and I sent some information last week indicating that the commodity prices have continued to increase with association with the geopolitical events that are going on, the inflation here, certain domestic policies with regard to production, green energy, as well as the unusual weather we've seen as a result of climate change. So we've continued on a daily basis to monitor those trends, and the prices have continued to go up. As I indicated, I was going to lock in a price, and we've actually established that. We've talked to the energy companies, and we're going to be going forward. We've indicated they want to lock in. But again, since I sent that email last week, I spoke to the consultants on Friday, and I've received the updates. Each day, it's been going up just a little bit more. So again, we talked about locking in with a reputable provider that we have worked with in the past, as well as we're looking at a mid-range contract of 31 months. And the reason we would do that is because we can't really foresee what will happen with Ukraine and what impact that will happen, I mean, have on domestic natural gas prices. If Western Europe nations were to boycott Russian energy sources, there may be a spike in demand here in the United States. So without having a crystal ball and not rolling the dice for another month, which could lead to even higher prices, we decided to go with a medium-range contract. So once I have that information, I'll share it with you, and I believe you've already given me prior approval, so we'll take care of that. The other item of note pursuant to last meeting's conversation about curbside, I went back and did some research on overrides and municipal law, and I wound up posing a question to our council KP Law. It went from our regular attorney, Corbo, to Lauren Goldberg, who, which is the managing attorney at the firm, well-seasoned in municipal law. And just before we came out this evening, she sent me a memorandum, which I'll share with the council later this evening, to talk about the complexities of doing an override, especially a special override in the case of curbside collection. And one of the issues is, within the law, the first year of an override has to be dedicated for the purpose for which the override is being asked for. And the other complexity is that a lot of the law is written for towns. Now, we are called the Town of Southbridge, but technically, we have a city form of government, which she said does play into how some of the rules are interpreted. But the long and short of it is that we may not be able to put this on the ballot this year, because if we were to pass, we would, we may be required to spend the amount we raised in the first fiscal year. But we won't be needing those funds till later on. So Counsel Jovan had asked about a conditional RFP, so the end result, and I did explain this a little bit to Counselor Adams, and we'll know more once we fully digest this memorandum, is we might wind up doing a hybrid where we have to essentially examine our timeline, walk it back from when the following year's annual election would be, and go out the appropriate number of months before, do an RFP, negotiate the contract, and then, once we know those numbers, time that with the last day that we can put a question on the ballot, so we have that information, put it on. That seems to be the way this would shape up, based on my conversations with Attorney Goldberg, but I will share that with you. And she said she would be available to come in and answer any questions if we wanted to do that on the 25th. So I will send that memo out to everybody, and if, Mr. Chairman, you're so inclined, you can let me know, and I will arrange to have Ms. Goldberg come out at a future meeting. And that's all I have for announcements, but if there's any questions...
Counsel Steves?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, one quick question. I had heard about that whole idea of being able to, of having the first-year requirement, but is it legal for us to phrase our ballot question in a way that permanently requires those funds to go to curbside? Because I had heard of concerns about people that theoretically you could remove the funds and do other things with those funds, and that would, that would not go over well.
Right. As I've always understood it, the first year you have to dedicate it to that.
Right.
In year two, you can spend those monies elsewhere. I would have to ask how we could ensure that that's dedicated for those services. But the sticking point here is we're not ready to pay for that.
No, I get that.
So that's, that's the conundrum or the dilemma that we have right now, is how to best work the timeline to ensure that we don't have any problems when the service ends and that we can seamlessly move in. So I'm working on that with our attorney, and I'll let you read the memo, and then you can let me know if you wanted to show up.
Would it be possible to put it, put that first year's funds aside into a dedicated account that we just don't touch? For the, for that year until the contract, the contract has to be renewed? Do we get the new contract?
So I would suggest maybe we read the memo, because there was a section on the memo talking about a general override versus a special override, and you could do that, but then I think you would have the same number of questions on a general override. Will that truly go for trash?
Right.
So versus a special override for trash only, and then you have to use it for those funds.
Right.
I didn't get a chance to read the memo in its entirety. I did have the conversation on Friday with Attorney Goldberg, so I have to go back and read that. I'll share it with all of you. We can all read it, and if you forward questions or recommendations, Mr. Chairman, we'll ensure that we get somebody here to answer those questions.
Very good.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else, eh?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is Presentations. There are no presentations this evening.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry?
We do have a presentation, proclamation.
I think that's on the 25th. Very good. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Citizens Forum. Are there any citizens that would like to come to the podium to address the council on an issue not on tonight's agenda? Please step to the podium, identify yourself for the record.
Donald Slensky, 33 Henry Street. I want to start by apologizing for my outburst at the end of my talk last time I spoke. I do want to acknowledge you are volunteering your time to serve the community. I called you hillbillies. That wasn't the word I meant to use, and I am sincerely sorry. I am a man distraught over having my emotional support dog of 11 years taken from me. He was everything to me, and it nearly killed me. It actually did kill a part of me. Understand, I have been subjected to derogatory comments by members of this board also. I have been called a psycho by Counselor Lazo. I have been called a crazy person, just to name a few, but I still stand before you knowing what some of you think of me. Well, maybe I may seem that way to you, but I am a man in agony over the loss of my dog that should never have happened in one emergency choking incident. I don't want this to happen to any other resident, so I speak the truth, not accusations, as Counsel Jovan has said. I back my statements up with actual quotes and/or dates of the meetings that were video-recorded. Case in point, it is not an accusation that the majority of you voted to kill my dog. It is a fact. I encourage anyone to view the September 27th, 2021, meeting where the vote was taken after ACO Spencer said she had no other alternative. Fact. To continue to say otherwise is a lie you are continuing to fester. In January 2021, you all gave me a fair hearing. That did not happen in June. One only has to view the June 28th, 2021, video to see you had your minds made up and you felt you had spent enough time on this in January. Several members voiced this several times during the meeting, and you simply followed the recommendation of the ACO. You didn't even entertain the emergency of that day, and it seems you made the decision I was lying. Fact, you didn't take into consideration that this dog lives in a rooming house with children with never one complaint. You didn't take into consideration the four months prior where I was out every day, multiple times a day, in full compliance with no complaints. You determined that all of a sudden, on one day, I simply said, "The hell with it," and I removed his muzzle. For what? You didn't add this up. You simply took the easy way out, and when it came to sentencing, you gave me the harshest sentence there was. My goal, my goal is that you will take your time every time something so difficult and so emotional comes before you, and not simply go with a recommendation by a city employee based on her opinion alone. In this case, her opinion, and I quote, "For the possibility it would happen again." Without looking at any of the other facts, that possibility took priority over all the months of compliance with no complaints. You did a wrong thing by allowing your exhaustion from the January hearing and allowing your full reliance on the ACO's weak opinion to formulate your decision to not return my dog to me and then later to euthanize my dog. You know, you say you're tired of hearing the same thing every time? Well, what you people did to me, and more importantly, what you people did to my dog was evil, and evil must be addressed every, every time possible. So you're going to hear from me.
Thank you very much. Counselor Lazo?
Just a point of clarification. I do not think or say that this gentleman is a psycho. The only thing I said was, his dog is not dead, and he keeps saying that we killed his dog. So I called him a liar for that, but that's the extent of it. Just a point of clarification, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Point of clarification, look up the video.
Thank you.
Call me a psycho.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium at this time to address an issue not on tonight's agenda? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, move Agenda Items 10, 11 up above number nine. That way, those that possibly will be sworn in today or be spoken with today, these police officers, to-be-police-officers can spend the rest of their evening with their families.
So move it, Chairman.
Thank you.
Second. You second it. Very good. All those in favor? Very good. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item Number 10. Vote to confirm the Police Chief's recommendation to appoint John Calagney Jr. of Southbridge, Mass. as a permanent police officer for the Town of Southbridge, effective upon successful completion of all medical and physical testing as required by Human Resources Civil Service. Very good. Do it.
Yeah. Well, I can do that now.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Make a motion to amend this Agenda item where it states, "Vote to confirm the," and insert, "Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment pursuant to the Police Chief's recommendation to move forward to be in line with the Charter."
I second that amendment. Very good. All those in favor? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Okay, Chief?
If I could, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Town Manager, good evening, members of the council. I'll go over the process first for both of the candidates that are here tonight. Both positions are existing and budgeted positions. The process takes several months. As most of you know, this all started back in November of 2021, but by the time we go through the whole hiring process, backgrounds, physical abilities test, medical testing, psychologicals, backgrounds, it can take quite some time. And even now, I was telling the candidates earlier, if this is approved tonight, it could be a couple more months at least until the next police academy is available. So with all that said, these gentlemen were in the top five for the scores in the civil service that we got from Boston. They were interviewed. They did extremely well. Mr. Calagney, who's standing here to my left, currently works at our Hotel and Conference Center. He'll have a four-year degree, a Bachelor of Science in Criminal Justice in May. He's a lifelong Southbridge resident. His dad had worked for us and still does, probably 25 to 28 years now as an auxiliary police officer. He's here tonight. The family's very embedded in our community. It's great when we can bring Southbridge kids forward. So I highly recommend Mr. Calagney for this appointment tonight.
Very good. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief Woodson. The chief and I have always talked, and I've always deferred to his judgment on the hiring of these individuals. I did see their backgrounds, and I did have a few minutes to talk with them outside, and I thanked them for their willingness to come forward and serve. And based on the recommendation of the chief, I would ask you to make this appointment.
Very good. Counselor Lazo?
Subcommittee voted unanimously for the confirmation of John Calagney Jr.
Very good. Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Item Number 11, Vote to Confirm the Police Chief's Recommendation to Appoint Anthony Santos of Southbridge, Mass. as a Permanent Police Officer for the Town of Southbridge, effective upon successful completion of all medical and physical testing as required by Human Resources Civil Service.
So move.
Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Also amended Agenda Item Number 11 to state the town manager's appointment pursuant to the Police Chief.
Record. All those in favor? Very good. Counselor Lazo, your committee's recommendation?
Subcommittee recommended unanimously for the confirmation of Anthony Santos.
Great. Thank you. Chief?
Again, through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Santos is also a Southbridge resident, lifelong resident, graduate of Southbridge High School. As I mentioned earlier, the position's existing. It's budgeted. Went through the entire process. Went to the Reserve Academy a few years ago on his own dime and his own time. Like I always say, we would have appointed him as an auxiliary, but we no longer have an auxiliary program due to the changes in the police reform bill. Also went to the Junior State Police Academy. He's bilingual. His dad worked for us for many, many years as an auxiliary. He's currently a police officer in the City of Springfield. Highly recommend him. Highly recommend him.
Very good.
Saying rings true, Mr. Chairman, for Mr. Santos. I did see his background, and I do defer to the chief on his recommendations based on these people's background. And I did have a moment to speak with him outside, so I would highly recommend the appointment.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry.
Just a quick comment. I'd just like to commend the chief. You know how it's always a stickler with me, vote Southbridge first. It's nice to see two Southbridge gentlemen are going for this post, but job well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very good.
Just a quick question.
Counsel Steves.
Through you to the chief. How many, so at this point, how many officers would you have on the force and how many vacancies?
We had two graduate on Thursday. They start this Thursday at field training. That's 36. This will be number 37 and 38. But again, it's 36 because we probably won't see these gentlemen until
Right.
spring, by the time they're done all their required training.
Right, okay.
So to answer your question quickly, 36, but with these two, it's 38 budgeted.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Very good. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, it's customary if they have any written speeches, they could, you do it now?
That's right. Okay. Written speeches. No speeches. All right. Agenda item number nine reverting back. Vote to confirm the police chief's recommendation to appoint the following people as special traffic constables, as a special traffic constable for a three-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2024. Christina Blodgett of Northbrook Field, Mass., Juan Cologne of Southbridge, Mass., Stephen Matthew of Southbridge, Mass., James Colors of Southbridge, Mass., Stephen Martel of Dudley, Mass., Donald Zamas of Charlton, Mass., Sean Hollins of Webster, Mass., Vicente Estrella Reyes of Lemonster, Mass., and John Calcagni, Sr. of Southbridge, Mass.
Sumo. Second.
Okay, I'll take, go ahead, Counsel Adams.
Sorry about this. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also needed to insert, motion to amend, insert the vote to confirm the, and town manager's appointment pursuant to the police chief.
Second.
Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Counsel Lozlo, your committee?
It is unanimous vote of the subcommittee to confirm all these appointments.
Very good. Chief.
If I could quickly, just to explain a little bit of the process, this is all full-time dispatches, auxiliary police officers that were formerly auxiliaries but now will be constables, also a corrections officer at one of our state prisons. Most of them are local. This will just get us in a good place for the summer, we can fill those details and we're not ordering in police officers. I think all of them will be great assets to the community, especially the firefighters that are paramedics and EMTs. It's great having them out there on the street, augmenting our police force. It'd be good to have everybody on board.
Very good. Counselors? Counsel Steves?
Quick clarification question. Did you have any concerns about the fact that ones from Northbrook Field and ones from Lemonster as far as being able to come, come on time to get, to get to the stuff that they're doing?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, no. They worked for auxiliaries for us for several years and never had any issues coming to events, helping out, volunteering. So I don't see any issues. Also, they're not here tonight. Most of them are already working. I explained to the subcommittee that I'm not going to pay overtime to have them come here to a meeting, and it just wouldn't make any sense. That's why they're not here.
Okay.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I need to reverse these. I need a motion. Go ahead, Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of the suspended rules move 13 to 12, above 12. Just the fact that you're applying
Second.
need to get that approved first before you hire a consultant. Thank you.
Second.
Very good. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, item number 13. Vote to approve the application for a FAA and Mast dot grant to update the airport master plan. Estimated cost not to exceed $160,000. FAA pays 90%. Mast dot pays 5%. And the town of Southbridge pays 5%, $8,000, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Sumo.
Second.
Very good. This came out of Counselor Ryan's committee, and it was unanimously passed to move up to council. Mr. Clemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The master plan is, the last master plan update was 2014. It's usually a 10-year cycle, but through, through the grant that we got this past year to redo, reconstruct the runway and two taxiways, we actually have moved up four years on our plan. So we want to resubmit for the new master plan. This will have, this is a probably a nine to 10-month process, so it will be public hearings, so people get involved, we'll get some advertisements out so the councils can come and work on what, where we want the airport to go in the future.
Very good. Questions? Very good. All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, real quick.
I'm sorry.
I had a quick question. I tried to find General Gov's meeting online. Was discussed where the funds were coming from at all?
I think through the airport revolving.
Okay. And the both, for both agenda items?
Yes, the, actually, for the independent review, that is built into the, to the grant, so that will be paid through the grant.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel Marketti.
I'm sorry, he may have just answered it. I think the discussion was the $8,000 will come from the grant. He, he may have just answered that.
Very good. Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Agenda item number 12. Vote to approve AECOM proposed independent fee estimates of professional consulting services for airport master plan in the amount of $4,900, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents. This is an independent review of the master plan proposal submitted by StanTech Engineering required by the FAA and Mast dot.
Sumo. Second.
Very good. Mr. Clemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty much as it says, the FAA and Mast dot require independent fee review of the proposal given by StanTech. So once we'll get that, we'll get that in, town manager and I'll sit down and, and negotiate where the, the final figure will be for the grant and the, and the cost of the project.
Very good. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to have to correct what I just said. The 4,900 will be coming from the grant for this. The $8,000 would be coming from the revolving fund, so I will correct what I just said. Thank you.
Counsel Steves?
Um, yeah. I had just a quick question to clarify. So when we were discussing this at Gen. Gov, obviously, this is something that's for, for the citizenry. This is something that's required because they are basically just going to be reviewing what StanTech does. I just want to clarify, is this going to be reviewing the proposal for, that StanTech is doing for the master plan? What, what StanTech proposes, the cost estimates in the master plan StanTech does? In other words, is this going to be done at the end? Or is this going to be done to review what StanTech is talking about doing now?
Well, when we apply for the grant, there's a whole list of items that are going to be completed in that, in that proposal that we're submitting to the FAA and Mast DOT.
Right.
And StanTech puts together a spreadsheet on hours and labor dollars that go against every single one of those items, you know, public hearings, doing any survey work, everything that's involved. And so what the independent fee structure does, he takes that spreadsheet and he goes item by item and determines if that's the fair number that StanTech has there for those fees and, and will adjust accordingly.
Okay.
Reviews the spreadsheet.
Okay, so, so they're not actually reviewing, for example, when, when StanTech does the master plan itself and comes up with these rough estimates of what, what the projects will do and what they might cost or something like that? He's not reviewing that. He's reviewing StanTech's own, when, when StanTech does the work for us, what they're charging us?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Anyone else? Counsel Marketti.
I would just like to say that I think this is a pretty good grant that you're going for. $8,000 for $160,000, I think is well worth it. Like to see a lot of more grants come in that way. So, thank you.
Very good.
That's all I have, thanks.
Okay. Anything further? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Thank you. Agenda item number 14. Vote to amend December 20, 2021, town council meeting minutes approved on January 10, 2022. Agenda item number 21. To correct the fee services amount from $75,000 to $775,025 in two references within the agenda item.
Sumo.
Well, I'll second for the moment for discussion, but
Certainly.
where did this, what is this, where did this come from?
Mr. Manager.
Go ahead, I'll let town manager speak.
I believe this originates with Ms. Harnoy's contacting my office. I know she's here. But what happens is when, you know, for audit purposes and other reasons, we have to make sure that anything that we approve or appropriate is properly documented. And this is the contract for Pomeroy Associates, which are, are owner's project manager for the fire station. And the $775,000 is the actual amount of the contract that you approved, except the minutes only reflected as $75,000. And I believe it is an issue of making sure that we properly document before we can pay these individuals. And I look back, Ms. Harnoy's is here, but I believe that is the, the main reason. And secondarily, we want to keep accurate records, but primarily, this, we're getting invoices in now and we have to pay them, and we want to ensure that we have a proper documentation of the council approvals.
Ms. Harnoy, do you have something you'd like to add?
Sure. I was just going through the, the minutes to put together the, the new fire station project, and I just noticed that the amount that was written in the minutes was the 75,000. It should be the 775,025. And NOR from the town manager's office did go back and confirm that with the actual minutes from the meetings.
Very good. Okay. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I went back into YouTube and took a look at that date. I made that motion that evening. I stated $775, $775, $775,025 in the motion itself.
Very good. Any further discussion? Counsel Marketti.
So this is basically just a typo?
Yep, a clerical error, and we're just addressing it.
Very good. Anything else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 15. Vote to approve a transfer request in the amount of $40,000 from account number 001132-578100, Town Council Reserve Fund, to account number 01900000-548100, Motor Vehicle Fuel and Lubricants to cover the cost of deliveries through the end of fiscal year 2022 due to unforeseen increases in gas and diesel costs.
Sumo.
Second.
I believe this came out of Gen. Gov as well?
It did.
And it came up unanimously?
It did.
Very good.
Unfortunately, it's one of those things where we don't, it's not something that we want to have to put more money into fuel, but it's another issue with the whole issues going on in Ukraine and, and the gas company just doing what they do.
Very good. Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I was looking at these agenda items 15 through 25 tonight, and I did have a conversation through email with the town manager and Ms. Harnoy's. And I look at these items and I'm, I'm, I'm not opposed to funding these. I'm not opposed to putting the money in for all these items. I know they need them. The only thing that I was questioning is whether or not the funding source, because when I look at these and I look at what ARPA funds are, could be used for, it seems to me that all 10 of these items would qualify for ARPA funds. I understand the argument, and we've had discussions before on this, where, where the money should come from and it should come, stay within the department. But I also know that the ARPA funds, according to the U.S. Treasury, ARPA funds can be used to maintain vital public services. And I got to tell you, all, all 10 of these items tonight are all vital public services. I'm not opposed to it. Just questioning whether we should be using ARPA funds, at least for some of these. For example, one of them on this, within this list here is for money for, and it specifically says because of sick leave due to COVID-19. So I just thought maybe it could be a conversation that we could have, what exactly do we want to use ARPA funds on? I did attend the ARPA meeting, and I know that a lot of the department heads have asked to use ARPA funds for some of the similar things that they're using here, that they're using department funds here tonight. So again, I, I understand the need, just questioning if some of this could be, come from ARPA funds, or if we want to leave it in the, within the department. And I thought it would be good to have a discussion on it anyway. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. McCall.
I did defer in part of the day to Ms. Harnoy's, and she did explain to me her response to Counsel Marketti. I was in negotiations and other meetings today with the chief as well as my HR, and I did mention to Counsel Marketti that my feelings were in line with Ms. Harnoy's relative to using these. My argument here would be that in many instances, those monies already exist elsewhere in those departmental budgets. For instance, within the police, because he hasn't had all these positions filled, he has money in his salary line item that he can transfer over. So where we already have money in the budget elsewhere, I would be reluctant to be taking one-time monies, you know, that we've received in an extraordinary time for extraordinary reasons. And that's my personal feeling. I mean, one, they're, they're one-time monies, but I think ARPA monies really should be used, in my opinion, on what I would consider a legacy project or something that will have some impact on the community that people can look back and say, this is what we got during COVID, and this is what we, what we did for the town, rather than, and I understand Counsel Marketti's position, and I understand why he's doing it. He wants to use the money in the best interest of the town. I just have a slightly different view of where I think they should go. So I, you know, I applaud his always checking and looking at alternative ways to utilize money and save the taxpayer, but at the end of the day, you know, we, we have two piles of money, but I think one should be for these big types of projects, for the one-time projects, and the other money where we already have it in, in a budget, we could just transfer it over to take care of these temporary shortfalls. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Lozlo.
I'd just like to comment. I, I understand the, where the, where the previous speaker's coming from, but in the big financial picture of what we're doing, Karen Harnoy's has always steered us in a pretty good direction. With the manager saying, stating that, what he's, what he, what he explained to us, I think the common sense approach was, you know, when it says COVID-19, you know, I think that is what it was appropriated for. But at the same time, if we're not breaking any rules and we can twist and turn to try and get more bang for the buck, then I, then I'm going to go along with it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 16. Vote to approve inspections department transfer request for $450 from account number 001240-558000, Miscellaneous Materials, to account number 001240-519700, Car allowance to cover the cost of gas for inspectors.
Sumo.
Second.
Discussion. Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 17. Vote to approve police department transfer request for $10,000 from account number 001210-511000, Salary, to account number 001210-524300, Repair and Maintenance of Buildings and Grounds to cover the costs associated with the emergency repairs of HVAC equipment.
Sumo.
Second.
Counsel Lozlo.
The vote is unanimous for the expenditure. Subcommittee. Thank you.
Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 18. Vote to approve police department transfer request for $10,000 from account number 001210-511000, Salary, to account number 001210-524300, Repairs and Maintenance of Buildings and Grounds to cover the costs associated with the repairs of the elevator in order to pass state inspection and emergency repairs of the sprinkler system.
Sumo.
Second.
Counsel Lozlo.
The vote was unanimous for the expenditure at subcommittee level.
Very good. Discussion.
I have a quick question.
Counsel Steves.
Is the chief still here?
Chief is still here.
Hi, chief. A quick question is for, actually, I should have asked this with the other, the last one too, but could you just give a quick explanation of, of the, the repairs that are needed and why? I assume you mentioned it to the subcommittee, and I wasn't there unfortunately. And how, and are you guys doing any sort of an overview of the police department to, to look at long-term needs and the kinds of things that are coming forward that we really need to take a look at? Do we have anything on that?
If I could, through you, Mr. Chairman, the first part of that question I'll answer, I'm happy to find Chief said tonight because I got a lot of this information from him. Our sprinkler system failed at one point recently, so our building maintenance slash mechanic went downstairs and fixed it, and all the gauges came back up, and we were all set and ready to go. Unfortunately, in the Commonwealth, and this can be verified by the fire chief, who's much more knowledgeable about sprinkler systems, you need to have them repaired by a certified technician, which costs several thousand dollars, as opposed to my mechanic doing it, and it costs like $100. But what they're saying is, chief, if your building burns down, and if he did the repair, the town is not protected with the insurance carrier, so it would be a total loss. So I didn't want to take that chance. I thought the repair was fine, but they will not sign off on our sprinkler system, similar with the elevator system. They will not sign off on anything unless there's a state inspector, state certified company that comes down with all the appropriate licensing and does all the repairs.
Of course.
Oh, understood is very frustrating, and I expressed that at, at subcommittee. The second part of that, yes, we, we had the facilities management study done, we're plugging away at some of those things, but the sprinkler system failing, I, we couldn't have predicted. The elevator every year, it seems to be something. Next year, I'll be coming forward with capital for the roof, some other heating system things years down the road. It's all laid out in that five or seven-year plan. So yes, I take that, the facilities management study very seriously. We've looked at it. It's a newer building, there's not a lot of issues, knock on wood, but things like this do come up, and unfortunately, we have to pay a lot of money to have it repaired, even though I could have it done in-house.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Chief, those forest pressure system, isn't it supposed to be inspected every year?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chairman, it is. It passed, but at one point, all of the gauges dropped to zero PSIs, which means the system wasn't functioning anymore, and there was a small pinhole in one of the overhead pipes. So we patched that pinhole with the best means that we could. It worked. It brought the sprinkler system back online, but we're being told that's not covered. It has to be done. The whole pipe has to be replaced.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Crazy.
Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 19. Vote to approve police department transfer request for $6,500 from account number 001210-511000, Salary, to account number 001210-530000, Special Services to cover the cost to administer a civil service assessment center for promotion to the rank of sergeant.
Sumo.
Second.
Counsel Lozlo.
It was unanimous for the appropriation at subcommittee level for confirmation.
Very good. Chief, do you have anything to add?
Well, sure, the council, this council voted on this December 14th of 2021 to hold the assessment center at PPP, and then the full council voted on December 20th, 2021. And I mentioned during both of those meetings that I'd have to come and do a transfer into this account to get this assessment center done. I mean, I'll be coming back to this council with a candidate for the promotion to sergeant in the near future.
Very good. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. When do you plan on actually handling this assessment center?
I, can we repeat that, sir?
When, when do you plan on actually doing this assessment center?
The assessment center already, the meetings that I went to in December with, scheduled the assessment center, we did it two weeks ago.
Okay.
Now this is to pay for it. Because they do, they provide the service first, then we pay for the, we get invoiced.
Okay, okay.
Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 20. Vote to approve police department transfer request for $25,000 from account number 001210-511000, Salary, to account number 001210-515100, Sick Leave, to cover costs associated with COVID-19 sick leave use by police officers and dispatchers through fiscal year 2022.
Sumo.
Second.
Counsel Lozlo.
The motion at subcommittee was unanimous for the expenditure.
Very good. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Item number 21. Vote to approve fire department transfer request for $1,500 from account number 001220-585600, Safety Equipment, to account number 001220-524300, Repair and Maintenance of Buildings and Grounds to cover costs for HVAC system repair and maintenance through the end of the fiscal year.
Sumo.
Second.
Counsel Lozlo.
The vote at subcommittee level was unanimous for the expenditure.
Very good. Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 22, vote to approve fire department transfer request for $1,500 from account number 001220-527000, rentals and leases, to account number 001220-53000, specialized services to cover costs for IT services and additional air cards through the end of fiscal year.
Tomo.
Second.
Council Lazo.
The vote at subcommittee was unanimous for this appropriation.
Very good. Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 23, vote to approve fire department transfer request for $1,550 from account number 001220-543000, maintenance improvement of buildings, to account number 001220-524300, repair and maintenance of buildings and grounds to cover costs for the town-wide fire alarm system in the fire station.
Tomo.
Second.
Council Lazo.
The vote at subcommittee was unanimous for this appropriation.
Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 24, vote to approve fire department transfer request for $20,000 from account number 001220-511000, salaries and wages personnel, to account number 001220-513000, overtime, to cover costs for overtime for the remainder of fiscal year 22.
Tomo.
Second.
Council Lazo.
After much discussion, the vote was unanimous on this appropriation.
Any discussion? Council Steve.
Um, yeah, just a quick question is, the next item also calls for putting costs toward overtime for the remainder of fiscal 22. Can we, why, why do we need to have this?
Chief? Go ahead, chief.
Good evening, everybody. Yes, Council Steve, you are correct. There was two separate accounts that were taking $20,000 over, out of, to, to, sent to our overtime account. We've had multiple issues in, in regards to COVID-19. Obviously, the police chief just did a transfer of a very, very similar to keep our staffing up. We had seven weeks during the fall and winter months of over $10,000 per overtime expenditure, per payroll. So we chewed up through quite a bit of that money. So these are two separate transfers from two separate accounts into the overtime account.
And will this provide enough to cover for the rest of the year?
Well, working with Ms. Harnoy's and our historical data, we've, we're thinking that this will get us through the rest of the year. Brush fire season is here. It's, it's getting dryer. So we're hoping that we don't have a lot of, a lot of brush fires as the next coming, coming weeks, but we will re, readdress it again in end of May, if we have to.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone else? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 25, vote to approve fire department transfer request for $20,000 from account number 001220-518200, assignments overtime other, to account number 001220-513000, overtime, to cover costs for overtime for the remainder of fiscal year 2022.
Tomo.
Second.
Council Lazo.
Vote at subcommittee was unanimous for the expenditure.
Any discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 26, vote to accept a donation of $100 to the fire department from Mrs. Laurel Smith to be used at the fire chief's discretion.
Tomo.
Second.
Council Lazo.
The vote was unanimous to accept this donation for the fire department?
Very good. Chief?
We received this donation from a resident. She, she didn't specify anything for it to be used for, particularly to the fire department. But generally, I try to use them for training scenarios or supplies that we need for such things.
Great. I think this is just another example of the generous citizenry here in Southridge and how they care for each other and look out for each other. So I think, I think this is definitely worth, worth applauding. Nice, 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 nice. Any discussion? All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number 27, vote to accept the ambulance certified public expenditure reimbursement program, CPE, fiscal year 21 report and reimbursement in the amount of $162,473.33 and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Tomo.
Second.
Council Lazo.
The vote was unanimous on this issue to go forward from subcommittee?
Chief?
So this is our ninth year, or actually, this has been my baby pretty much throughout, since I started here. This is the ninth year we've done this. We've gone from the beginning stages of about $62,000. Now we're up to this pretty good figure of $162,000 and some change. This is basically reimbursement from the Medicare system for the costs, to cover, to cover the cost of, of what we really don't get paid for when we do have an ambulance, give someone an ambulance ride. We are set at a contractual rate of a very low number. Medicaid does that throughout the whole nation. Basically, this basically puts together all of our fuel, our mileage, our supplies into this grant program. And basically, this is the number that spits out at the end. So I'm very, very half happy and grateful that this, this number is a little bit larger this year to cover some of our other costs. This money does go back to the general fund when it comes in in June.
Good. Any discussion? Thank you, chief, to you and your team for following this up and, and getting us a better, better report every year. I appreciate that. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present?
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item number 28, council's forum. Council Dow.
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council Lazo.
No, nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Council Steve.
Um, yeah, just a couple of quick things. One is, again, a reminder for tomorrow night from 4:00 to 8:00 PM is the municipal vulnerability programs hearing number one. It's at the community center. Unfortunately, it also conflicts with the school committee's public hearing on their budget at 6:30. And if you happen to be in Dudley, the Dudley Grange is doing a talk on gardening at 7:00. So there's all kinds of things going on tomorrow night. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Council Mike Hattie.
I'm all set tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Just wish everybody a happy Easter coming up and the Memorial Day Parade. Just a reminder, end of May, May 30th, 2022, and we'll get the flyers out very soon. Thank you.
Very good.
And next, agenda number 29, discussion of the next meeting date, Monday, April 25th, 2022, 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Very good. Agenda item number 30, vote to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Lodge, Chapter 38, Section 21, 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining regarding all collective bargaining units, which if discussed in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the body.
Tomo.
Second.
Roll call.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council Dow?
Yes.
Council Lazo?
Yes.
Council Mike Hattie?
Yes.
And Council Steve?
Yes.
Very good. We'll be going into executive session. The town council will adjourn from executive session and will not reconvene in open session. Thank you.